Meeting will come to order at 6:00 PM. Regular meetings in the City of Clear Lake, Council and the Development and Dispatching Agency, January 9th, 2020. Could you all please stand for the option. Let's do the roll call first. Get ahead of myself.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Perrock?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fluton?
Here.
Mayor Kramer?
Here.
Now, if we would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Fluton, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll all remain for that invocation and a moment of silence following that. Councilmember Perrock, would you lead us, please?
Thank you. I would like to remember a past employee of the city, if that's okay, Mayor.
That is absolutely okay.
As I served on our planning commission, we had a wonderful person who did a lot of work. Her name was Sharon Goody, and she has passed, and I would just like those who may have worked with her and known her that we could have a moment to remember her as we pray tonight. Anyway, if you join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we ask that you will hear our prayer and that you will come and your Spirit would be with us tonight, that you could lead us and guide us as we make decisions that will benefit and help those who live in this great city. We ask that you will watch over those first responders who go out time and time again to keep our community safe, both from fire and for those violations that that thin blue line is necessary to keep our homes and our children safe. Father, we ask that you be with those other leaders throughout the world and our nation who are making critical decisions, and that you could give us a peace to know that they're in those places because they know what to do and they have you with them. Father, we ask that you would keep the city in your heart and prayer as we move forward, and we ask all this in your Son's holy name. Amen.
Amen. This meeting will be dedicated in the memory of Sharon as well. Moving on, just to review of meeting procedures, all items on the agenda will be open for public comment before final action is taken. Citizens wishing to introduce written material into record at a public meeting, on any item are requested to provide a copy of the written material to the city clerk prior to the meeting dates, and the material may be distributed to city council prior to the meeting. Speakers must restrict comments to the item as it appears on agenda and stay within a three-minute time limit. I have the discretion of limiting the total discussion time for an item as a courtesy to others. Also, please turn off your cell phones and anything else that is distracting. Okay, first thing, adoption of the agenda. Your city manager, do we have any change, or you have any changes or additions?
No modifications.
Anyone on council have anything to add for the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll make a motion to accept the agenda submitted. Okay, the motion's been made by Councilman Perrock and seconded by Councilwoman Overton. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, the motion passes. Okay, prior to our first presentation, I'd like to turn this over to our city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So I'd just like to introduce you to the city's new Public Works Director, Dale Goodman. He started this week. Dale comes to us with a lot of experience. He was the Public Works Director in Willows, California, St. Helens, Oregon, and most recently in American Fork, Utah. He has a very broad range of experience and just real excited to have Dale here. He's jumped in right away this week and excited about all the things we're going to do together.
I hope this is on. I am really excited to be here and look forward to working with you and hopefully making a difference in the lives of the citizens here in a positive way.
We're looking forward to you doing that as well, Dale. Welcome aboard. Okay, moving on to our first presentation. Chief White?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Tonight, I have the opportunity to introduce you to our newest dispatcher, Miranda Logan. Miranda is 21 years old. She was born in Carson City, Nevada, and moved to Lake County as a young child. She graduated from Kelseyville High School and has worked in Lake County since that time. She's a mother of two cats. She likes the outdoors and she likes to go hiking in her spare time. Miranda is the second-to-last position that we're trying to fill within the dispatch center, so we're really excited, and we look forward to seeing her progress through the training program. So at this time, I'll administer the oath of office.
Aye. Miranda Logan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of State California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
The Constitution?
To the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California?
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, our second item would be our years of service recognition. It's Sergeant Dominic Ramirez. Okay, Sergeant Ramirez, in appreciation of your dedication, time, and talent, the City Council of the City of Clear Lake extends our sincere gratitude in honor of your commitment and years of service to our city, dated this ninth day of January 2020, and signed by myself as mayor. Thank you very much.
Yes, I just wanted to say briefly that, you know, one of our top priorities is both recruitment and retention, and that to have somebody that's served here for 15 years, I've gotten to know Sergeant Ramirez over the last 18 months or so that I've been here. He's a tremendous asset to this city, has a significant amount of experience. He's also a very humble person, and I had to order him to be here tonight, but I do appreciate him being here tonight, and I think it's important that we, as the city leaders and city council, do recognize the employees that make the commitment to stay here and make the commitment to make a difference and make this a cleaner and safer city. So thank you, Sergeant Ramirez.
Chief, we'll be coming down with one more item here.
At this time, if Officer Keller could come forward? So for this item, I'm going to turn it over to Captain Tim Selly, the Operations Commander.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, honorable members of the council, thank you for the privilege to make this special presentation before you tonight, to recognize the good work of one of our officers. The men and women of the Clear Lake Police Department do extraordinary things every day, but every once in a while, there's an opportunity for us to stand out and be recognized for going above and beyond, and I think that's what happened in this situation. This officer was recognized for his extraordinary acts and the things that he did, and I think that's commendable in itself, but every once in a while, we're in the right place at the right time, but this goes beyond that because this officer's actions are what truly counted in this situation, because if he did not take the action that he did, this situation surely would have had a tragic result. And I'd like to read what the circumstances of that were. On December 2nd, 2019, Officer Keller was on patrol in the area of the 14700 block of Wallen. Officer Keller saw two suspicious subjects enter a property which drew his attention to the property. As Officer Keller was preparing to investigate the suspicious subjects, he observed a subject on the ground, not breathing. The subject was not breathing and had no pulse, believed to be the result of a possible overdose of narcotics. Officer Keller quickly went into action, advised he needed Code 3 medical, and he began CPR. Officer Keller continued CPR until the subject developed a pulse. After the subject developed a pulse, medical personnel arrived on scene and provided additional medical aid. Before he was transported, the subject was breathing and had a pulse, and was taken to the hospital for treatment. And at the time I wrote this, he was expected to live. However, I've been advised by the officers that they've seen this subject walking around their day-to-day operations, and that's wonderful news. Based on the totality of the circumstances, I strongly believe that Officer Keller's actions saved this subject's life. I recommend he be considered for a life-saving award.
So at this time, we're going to present him with the certificate, which outlines the circumstances of the call, along with the medal, the life-saving medal, which he'll be permitted to wear on his uniform. Congratulations.
Chief, do you want a brief break to take photos, or?
Yes, if we could just take about a three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go for it. This is public comment. I'm sorry, we do have another presentation. Carl? Carl Parker, with Mobility Programs Manager for Lake Lakes, and he's going to tell us a little bit about what to do. Someone have the...
Here we go.
Okay. Love going to conferences, right? One spirit comes up, and then another spirit comes up, and there's whirring and clanking while the tech guy gets the whole thing going and everything. But, yeah, there we go. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My goal would be to raise awareness about some of the special transportation needs that exist in the county here, and also to let you know some of the things that are being done to meet those needs. So... There we go. Okay, so we have this big question, right? And I have a question for everyone here. Did anyone come here tonight by public transit?
Walking.
Yeah, walking. And there's not a right or a wrong about it, but as you may or may not know, in the county here, if you don't have a car or access to someone who has a car, you have a big, big challenge, a big problem. Those are the, you know, the part of the population that we've been really working on the last few years. Lake County is a tough place to live if you don't have a car, and the challenges increase dramatically for those who are elderly, disabled, or low-income. And, you know, you know some of these facts, but in the county, we have above state average vulnerable populations, we have above state average disabled, we have above state average numbers of veterans, and low-income, fixed-income individuals. At the same time, while we have those vulnerable populations, we also have special challenges: limited specialized medical services, large distances, small population, and limited resources. You can stop me anytime and argue if you disagree with that. So we have, on the one hand, extraordinary needs, and on the other hand, extraordinary limitations or constraints in what we can do. So we've been working with this goal, to provide the most appropriate, efficient, and cost-effective non-emergency medical transportation to Lake County's most vulnerable populations. So what are the solutions? I'm happy to report that a lot is being done, and has been done for years, by Lake Transit. I'm just running you through some statistics, and I think I dropped off packets, maybe? So there's a sheet that summarizes all of this. You don't have to, you can come back to it if you want to, and of course, I'd be perfectly happy to talk with you at any length afterwards in the future. But Lake Trains, or all those buses that you see going around, for the 10-year average is that 335,000 trips a year have been provided for people who have that problem of not having transportation. Of those, 8,800 are wheelchair boarding, so those are people who aren't able to get on and off the bus independently but need to have a list assist. Pretty significant. 9,600 dial-or-ride trips per year. Dial-or-ride service only is in Lakeport and in Clear Lake, but that's almost 10,000 trips a year for people who are, have extraordinary needs in that regard. And of those, almost 5,000, over half, are medical trips, trips to medical destinations, medical providers. Just a little bit more about that, some sort of specialized niche things in addition to the fixed route. We have provided 1,300 trips per year, a four-year average, helping homeless people to get to the warming center in Lakeport from all over the county. We have transferred in 2017 a bus to Adventist Health to support their transportation program which aims at helping people get to medical appointments. And they are, we keep track, they report the data of their boardings, 3,400 trips a year, just getting people to medical appointments who might not otherwise get to them. And finally, just, you know, one of the things we have to do to try and deal with that limited resource thing is work on grants, and in 2017, we got an $800,000 Federal Transportation Administration grant. That's $800,000, almost a million dollars coming into Lake County to support transportation programs. And just last year, we wrote a second one, and hopefully will be funded later on this year. So that's, you know, some of what the transit system as a whole is doing, but there are still special needs and challenges that are not able to be met by the fixed route transit system. One of them, and here's a question, how many people in this room have been referred outside the county for some kind of specialized medical care in the last year or two? Just put up your hands. There's pretty many people, right? That happens a lot. And some of the challenges, I mean, you can imagine, if you're a person who doesn't have a car, doesn't have someone, a family member, a friend, or a neighbor who is able to help you do something like get to UCSF in San Francisco for some kind of really critical medical care, you have a big problem, don't you? It's huge. So I want to share with you just a little bit, and to put a face on it, here's just a couple of challenges that have been presented to us in the last year. Here's the first case. It's a woman, she's 79, she's a cancer patient, she needs transportation from Lower Lake to Ukiah, that's about 60 miles one way. She has to do seven trips for chemotherapy, I think it was, and then follow-up care afterwards. Another case, you probably know some of these people, or at least people in this kind of situation. This is really extraordinary, a 48-year-old woman, again, a cancer patient, needed transportation to get from Clear Lake to Ukiah, 55-mile one-way trip, five trips per week for six weeks, so over 3,000 miles of transportation. Again, if you don't have your own vehicle and you don't have someone who can help you with that, even someone in that situation, right, that's a big burden, a really huge challenge that people are facing. So what are the solutions? I want to share with you briefly just a couple of solutions that we've developed over the last four years to meet those needs. The first one is called the Pay Your Pal Ride Assistance Program. It's basically a volunteer driver program, a low-cost transportation service assisting elderly, disabled, and isolated residents of Lake County. And just in a nutshell, how this program works, it's for elderly and/or disabled people, low-income, unable to use public transit to get to medical appointments. And once enrolled in the program, it's a pretty simple process to get enrolled, takes about 20 to 30 minutes over the phone, although often they want to tell us a lot more about their lives because they're isolated, lonely, and so forth. But once in the program, they receive a 200-mile-a-month mileage allocation at .35 per mile reimbursement, and the rider or the person who needs the help with transportation recruits their own driver. And just a little detail about that, going back to those two examples that I gave you. So the transportation for those people, and this is very typical of cancer patients, involves a really intense amount of transportation in a fairly short period of time, and then hopefully, you know, the need subsides. We went to the board a couple of years ago when we saw more and more people in this category. We said, well, 200 miles a month, and you've got a 3,000-mile course of treatment, isn't, you know, all that much help? So we presented to the board that we could give people the option to get on what we call the 12-month plan. So we just basically take 200 miles a month times 12, and then subtract in any given month the amount, with the understanding that once they've exhausted that amount, then they would not be eligible for further reimbursement until the following year. I hope, as we move forward, that we can get more funds. The constraint there is the amount of funds available. It's very painful to tell someone, I'm sorry, you know, we can't help you with any more transportation for six months. So hopefully, we can change that moving forward with grant writing and so forth. But just to give you an idea of kind of what's happening through that program, so between the four-year program that this has been in operation, the four-year period from October 2015 till last November, we've had, served 123 clients, done over 11,000 miles, about 11,000 one-way trips, over a quarter of a million miles of transportation for these people, at a cost of $8,000, $8,500 for reimbursement. It's about $7.50 per trip, which is, you know, really inexpensive. Obviously, there's some, oh, that's just the reimbursement cost, there's overheads and so forth, but those are covered through grants. And a really cool feature of this program, so we've had, we keep track of the volunteer hours which get reported, over 14,000 hours of volunteer service, so we're engaging people in the community to help people who need it. And to give you an idea, just in a, you know, so that's a four-year period. Just a typical month, November was pretty typical, 47 clients used the service, we provided 433 one-way trips, over 10,000 miles, and for a reimbursement cost of about $3,500. So what do those numbers mean, statistics, right? What do they mean? If you think about it this way, if you take all those numbers and you divide them by two, that's, each one of those is a trip to medical care, and a trip that might not have happened otherwise, because we know, both from providers and from the people that we're serving, that, you know, sometimes, I can't get a ride, I can't go to the appointment. So if you just look at it, so November, then what that means is that there were 216 trips to medical care that might not have happened otherwise, and over the four-year period, over almost 6,700 trips to medical care. So you might wonder, why does this matter? And it's a simple equation. Better access to healthcare yields better healthcare outcomes and reduced costs. It's kind of a no-brainer, isn't it? I mean, if you could get to the doctor before it turns into a 911 trip, that costs a lot less money. The ambulance ride is the most expensive conveyance, and the emergency department is the most expensive healthcare delivery modality. So it's good all around. And the best part of all, you know, the statistics are still kind of dry and boring, but these actually represent actual lives, people, you know, if you think of your grandmother or your mother or, and we have people like from San Jose who have a parent here, and they can't get here to help them, and they call and they try and find out, how can we help their mom? You know, so think about this, and these are some days we do surveys, here's a couple quotes, "As a disabled senior without a car, this program makes a huge difference." Another person wrote, "I have doctor appointments in Santa Rosa and Napa. It's too far to ask a neighbor to drive me without reimbursements, which I can't afford." And then finally, someone said, "This program cuts down on isolation." And listen, my spirit, you're probably aware, but if you're not, you could do a little Google search and find out, what are the healthcare impacts of isolation and loneliness and so forth? We have tons of people in that category. So it just turns into getting people out of the house and having some human interaction to get the medical care they need. I'll share just one last thing. Woman Nicola, she knew that we were doing, I was doing a presentation, she wanted to say, make a statement, so she sent us, we're tagging her picture. She said, "Medical issues wreak havoc in people's lives in many ways. Gaining the ability to get the doctor, get to the doctor to receive treatment or assistance is more valuable than anyone can know until they are in the position where that is not possible, and yet their life depends on it." So very quickly to finish up, I just want to share with you, we've just, in the last couple of months, started a new transportation service that we call Medilane, and it's designed to transport people between Lake County and Santa Rosa. Surveys that we've done have indicated that Santa Rosa is one of the main places to where people are being referred, and the service is operating five days a week. There's an appointment window that we're asking people to try and get their appointments between 10 o'clock and 2 o'clock, and the reservations are required one week in advance, and the fare is $20 per round trip. And we're working on getting some funding assistance to help with that for people who are needing it. So just to conclude, you know, I just wanted to share with you, this work that we're doing is a partnership between Lake Transit and Lake Lakes. In 2014, the Lake Transit and the Area Planning Council initiated a mobility management program to address some of these needs, was recommended by the Coordinated Plan. In 2019, so just last year, Lake Lakes was established as a separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit, which one of the main reasons was to expand fundraising opportunities. And we've opened a new office on Lake Shore Drive, maybe you've noticed it, across from Griffin's Furniture, just finally got signs up, and we're pretty excited, so stop by sometime and say hi and see us. So my conclusion is, Lake Lakes and Lake Transit Mobility Services are making a difference in this county, one life at a time, one ride at a time. So thanks very much. If you're happy to answer any questions, I know you have a full agenda, but I'd love to talk with anyone anytime after the meeting. Thank you, Carl. There was one, did you have a question?
Okay. May I ask you? One of the things that I found with the seniors, for those of you guys who don't know, I'm the director of the senior center, is that they're finding a hard time finding anybody to do the Pay Your Pal. So is there something where we might be able to market together, maybe afterwards we can talk, market together about trying to get a list of maybe drivers and get them all ready on board, that we would have a list to be able to give people to call and say, hey, you ride here can, you know, because that's the main thing. If they had people to give them a ride, probably, you know, but my thing is I'm finding that even if they signed up, they can't find anybody to give them the ride, so there's nobody to help them, so that's the biggest problem. So I think maybe that there needs to be a marketing on that situation, in my perspective.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're well aware of that, and in fact, the Pay Your Pal program was actually adopted from a program developed in Riverside, California over 20 years ago. from a program developed in Riverside, California over twenty years ago, and it's been very successful. And part of the model of that, and part of why we adopted it, was that it was, we didn't have a huge amount of resources to invest in this, so we thought, we need to do something that's lean and mean as possible. And in that program, the rider selects their own driver, and in so doing, Lake Transit or now Lake Lanes has, is freed of liability for responsibility for selecting, certifying, approving both the drivers and their vehicles and so forth. However, there are other models for volunteer driver programs, some of the grant that we applied for from the Federal Transportation Administration, part of that was funding that envisioned developing a parallel volunteer driver program that would do exactly what you said, much more expensive, higher level of liabilities, therefore has to be insured, all that kind of stuff, but we're working on it.
Is there a way that it could just be just a referral list, where they still pick their own drivers and everything, but you just have a list of people that they can, like IHSS does? IHSS says the person a list of five people, and they call them and they pick them and everything, you know, they're not responsible for it because the person's still doing it. So you just become a referral, it's not where you're sending the person to pick them up, but you just send them a list of people that they can call and find out if they're available to take them. So just a thought.
The people that I report to tell me, I may not do that because there's an implied, you know, liability, and, you know, I'm not qualified to assess whether or not that's really, but I think that's the core issue, and you know, I mean, we live in a litigious society, so, so that's a difficult thing. What I do do, when I encounter someone, I ask them, you know, are you involved with a church, or are you involved with a senior center, so forth? I also get caught in and, you know, put it out there, you need help from someone. The other thing that I do, because every once in a while I encounter somebody who wants to drive, you know, could I drive, could you help me connect? And I said, well, I can't do that, but what you could do is go to a senior center and put on the board, you know, the notice board, and talk to the director, and let them know, you know, if you have somebody who is in need, you know, talk to me. It's a very small handful of people at this point that do that, but it is a significant need, and it's a measure of the degree to which people are isolated in their lives. I mean, I can't even imagine living a life where I didn't have someone that I could turn to who could help me in that kind of a way. It's really challenging.
So it might be that we could help each other because we do refer, we do have a referral program through the Senior Center, so it might be something that we can connect where we do the referral investigation and background checks, and you guys can just refer them to us. We should talk after that.
Yes, absolutely. It'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you again, Carl. Over the years, I've known you, first as a pastor of the Methodist Church, and later on, as we got into this, as I've been on the board of LPA, and now on the board of Lake Lanes, being your boss, as you just pointed out, I've come to really appreciate your passion for what you do, and I want you to know, we really appreciate that. So thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Okay. Next up, we have a presentation by Albert Lerner, is that correct?
Lerner, yes.
Partnership Specialist for U.S. Census Bureau on our 2020 census.
Grab the clicker as we shave our mouths. Good evening. Are we, yeah, great. Thanks. Your agenda says Vicky Patino, but I'm actually standing in first, she wasn't able to make it tonight, so thanks, Mayor Crean, members of the council, city manager, and city clerk, for giving us a few minutes to tell you a little bit about the census, just a quick overview, and also about our partnership program, and how you can join us and support the census by being a partner. So, let's see here, okay. Why does the census matter? Folks scratch their head all the time, why do we want to count everybody every ten years, not only in California but across the country? The first reason is power, and by that I mean power and representation. We use those census numbers every ten years to do a reapportionment of congressional seats. So we have quite a few in California, where the first time ever, we may lose a seat or two in California, so it's really important that we get a complete count this time around. The numbers are also used for state pre-district, being legislative districts, and even board supervisors and city councils use them as well, so very important to really get the proper apportionment of our elected districts. Second is money. More than six-hundred-and-seventy-five billion dollars is allocated annually based on census numbers and population numbers. I mean, I know, I'm from Sonoma County, but like us, you probably get community development block grant funds, you probably get funds for our children's programs, food assistance, Head Start, et cetera. You mentioned the transportation program, and a lot of transportation programs are based on census data. So all of that is very important, to be able to access those funds on a regular basis and get your fair share. And a lot of that is distributed based on population counts. Something new this year in the census, this is the first time you will actually be able to respond via the internet or via your computer, believe it or not. So we're hoping to get quite a few responses that way, so it's a first. Also, you can do it by your smartphone, or you can do it the old-fashioned way, a paper ballot, if you choose to do so, and some folks may want to do that. The census self-response form on the internet will be available not only in English but in twelve other languages. So amazingly, we're really making it accessible based on the linguistic diversity, if you will, of not only California but across the country. There has been a lot of concern about confidentiality, as of late, with a lot of folks hacking computers and that sort of thing. The census data is confidential, as required by law, so we do not share the results with not only outsiders, but with any other governmental agencies as well. So it is confidential, we don't share any of that with others. We, as an employee, take an oath to also do that as well, we can't be prosecuted for that, believe it or not, so, and I say that because, as members of the city council and trusted voices, people will ask you, you know, is it confidential? And so we're looking at you, and I'll talk about that in a second, as trusted partners, to really convince your constituents, it's the right thing to do, and it'll be confidential and protected. So what do we ask for? I was at a meeting, a big Sonoma County Alliance meeting yesterday, business members in Sonoma County, there was a lady sitting next to me, and said, "I'm not giving you my social security number, I'm not giving you my bank account number," and I'm like, "No, we're not asking for that kind of information." So it's actually pretty simple, pretty straightforward. I don't think it's too intrusive or too controversial. Number of people in household, additional people living there, by that I mean if there's other friends, relatives, and what have you that may be in the household, do you rent your own, telephone number, name, sex of individuals in the house, age and birthday, ethnicity and race. So pretty straightforward. I think most folks would be fairly comfortable sharing that information with us. The vast majority of people, upwards of ninety-five percent, will get an invitation in the mail, postcard on or around March 12th. That postcard will say, invite you to take the census, it'll give you information to go online to take it, we can get you a link and so forth. So we expect most folks to do it that way, from that invitation, and that will be mailed to everybody's addresses. Lake County is like Sonoma County, we have areas where folks don't have regular addresses, so if you have a P.O. box, you will not get invitation in the mail. So like we're doing in Sonoma County, someone will actually come out, a census person, and drop a ballot off. We have areas where there's, kind of up in the hills, rural areas or whatever, that get their mail through a local P.O. box. So those will be actually dropped off to people to respond. And lastly, there's a number of folks that are experiencing homelessness and transitory living situations, maybe in shelters, et cetera, et cetera. Those folks, we will dispatch teams of people to actually enumerate those folks face-to-face through interviews. So we're working on a plan right now in Sonoma County, and I will likely be reaching out to Clear Lake and some of the cities here in the county about identifying some of those facilities and encampments and things like that, that we can really identify and counter, that's the goal. The ballot itself is actually available in English and Spanish, and depending on the last census, in census tracts that are, have a significant Spanish-speaking population, they may automatically trigger getting a ballot that's bilingual. So we need English and Spanish as well for those areas that are highly populated by bilingual Spanish speakers. It is quite diverse, to go one step further, as I mentioned, that the online response, self-response form on the internet is actually available not only in English but twelve other languages, and so there are teams right there, Spanish, Chinese, Vietnamese, et cetera. And beyond that, we actually have an additional fifty-nine-nine non-English language guides. So if you happen to know somebody speaks a language that isn't as common, there may be a language guide out there that you can get folks to assist with or whatever, to be able to provide information to fill out that ballot. And of course, the paper ballot, as I said, is, will be available in English and Spanish. So partners, I want to, that's one of the reasons I'm here today, is talking about being a partner. The city of Clear Lake is a part of our partnership program. We do love our partners, and our partners are critical in disseminating 2020 census information and getting everyone counted. And as I mentioned, we're looking for trusted partners in the community, so not only elected officials, but local nonprofits, local CBOs that really interact, housing agencies, et cetera, who constituents would trust as someone who's going to give them really the information they need to be able to access the census, so that's very important. So we're looking for the city of Clear Lake and others to be one of our partners. Nationwide, we want to reach three-hundred thousand, we're halfway there, we want to identify sixty-three thousand partners in the western region, and so we are working daily, we go out daily, I talked about four or five different agencies yesterday in Sonoma County, I've talked to the city of Hillsborough, Town of Windsor, various chambers of commerce I'm also interacting with. So we're really mobilizing people to be, to really get out the word on a large scale. And as a partnership specialist, we do things like tonight, we do presentations, we provide information, a little training about what the census is, answering questions, et cetera. I brought a few pieces of information with me that I can leave behind outside there, some of them are about employment, because we're actually hiring, we wanted to talk about that, but if interested, we can get you posters and other things you may want to post in prominent areas in the community. And so what can you do, the city clerk? One is, as a partner, you can help us to get the word out to constituents. You can post it on the city website, the Town of Windsor, if you want to, example, they put up some information in Sonoma County quite a bit, links to our 2020census.gov site, so it's a lot of information online, you can go there. If you have a newsletter, you put out city manager's office or the council, you can put a verb in that, and post it, get information, get information to social media, everybody's using Facebook and Instagram and other things now, you can do social media posts promoting it on behalf of the city of Clear Lake. And lastly, having events like this, inviting folks to come in and speak. So we are hiring, so here's some information about that, I will leave behind some cards in the back if anyone's interested to get out the word, you know, about employment. It's a great part-time job, as the way I look at it, I was down in our, we have a census operation office in Ronan Park, and there's a lot of college students there and a lot of retirees, so on both ends of the spectrum. So it's a great part-time job, you can pick up probably four to five thousand dollars in a short period of time over the next couple of months, you know, whatever's supporting the census, so have to be eighteen years or older, a citizen, and fill out an application, and we may take a look at you. There's a number, 2020 Census on the website, 2020census.gov/jobs, and there's a number there listed. As I said, it's a great way to pay off those Christmas bills and really get a lesson in civics and do something great for the community. Any thoughts? Everyone, encourage you to subscribe to 2020census.gov website, get the informational blast, the nuggets that come out of there about the census when it's coming, there's a treasure trove of information there. As I indicated, I didn't put a form in your packet, but through the city clerk, if you all are interested in getting more information, we can certainly provide you more, whether it's flyers or what have you, red cards and that sort of thing, to make sure you have what you need. I guess the most important thing we're asking you to do is prepare your community to be counted. Get the word out, make sure everybody, on or around March 12th, everyone's going to get that card in the mail, you might want to highlight it that week of the city council meeting, whatever, until April, it's coming. April 1st is National Census Day, so you'll probably see things done on a national level by folks all across the country. I understand they're getting some sports organizations involved, maybe the NFL and others to kind of support it. You can also invite partnership specialists to recruit us to present at your meetings, events, and festivals. We do have Vicky, who didn't come tonight, is bilingual, she speaks Spanish, so if you have some organizations who would need that, we can certainly do that. Most importantly, we want you to spread the word about the census and help us recruit, and we'd love to be partners with the city of Clear Lake. And that's all I've got, that's me. For contact information, if you have anything else, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lerner. Are there any questions?
So, so one of the things, we're kind of a partner already with the Senior Center because we did have one of your people come down and do a presentation during our, we have like two-hundred people there.
Great.
Yeah, and I believe they actually got some applications and stuff like that, so I encouraged her to go around to the other senior centers and basically do the same thing. So, and we're putting out in our newsletters and stuff like that, and on our website, to make sure it be counted, is what I call it, you know, be counted as something, because people don't realize that they're, you know, everybody counts for something, and as you said, it counts for our grants, so I think all of us kind of survive on grant funding, so, in one way or another. So, yeah, so it's a great idea, it's very pleasurable, and I know that three or four of my seniors signed up for jobs, so perhaps that.
Great.
So yes, I encourage anybody that can have that and help the community, one, be counted, but two, also, there's jobs there for them, so.
Great.
She was great, so.
Yeah, thanks for getting the word out and for supporting it, so.
Yeah. Other questions? Just have a curiosity, and you might have said, and I missed it, about how long did it actually take to fill out online or, you know?
We're saying ten to twenty minutes, I mean, it's pretty fast.
So it's really quick.
And they've done some, a lot of testing around the technology platform, that was really people were wondering, hey, is this going to work? People are used to filling out ballots and things like that, but we've done a lot of testing over the last two years probably, and so estimate ten to fifteen minutes, you know, of course, obviously, if you're, have some issues with impairment or something, it might take you a little bit longer. But we are asking people in the libraries, senior centers, and others to make computers available, so when the members come down, if they feel comfortable going to their senior center and sitting there and, you know, filling out their census there, that's great. They may not have access to Wi-Fi or whatever at home, that sort of thing. We're encouraging the schools to get involved. There's another program that I didn't really go into details called Statistics in Schools, where they integrate the census into the curriculum, so some of your schools will be hearing one, because it came down from the state superintendent's office. So there's quite a few ways to get involved, you'll be hearing in different areas, but to answer your question, probably ten to fifteen minutes-ish.
Okay, so very important and really easy to do.
Yes, we think so.
Okay, well, thank you again, Mr. Lerner.
Thanks, great. Thanks for the time. Thank you. I will return your clicker, and I'll leave some information behind. Thank you.
Okay, now, we'll have a little comment. Time for any member of the public to address the city council in any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Please complete a speaker information card, kind of like this one, and present it to the city clerk prior to start of the meeting. Brown Act, with certain limited exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss the issues brought forth under public comment. Council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on the next available agenda. Please note, the comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item, and comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. So that said, I have one here, is there, would you like to step up, Supervisor Sabatier?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. First off, I want to say a Happy New Year. I'm excited about what's going to happen in 2020 for the city of Clear Lake. I feel like you're already starting with great momentum, you have a part being reworked outside, you have a new public works director, which has been an empty seat for unfortunately too long. It's exciting to know what's going to happen here, I can't wait to see some of the things that are already on the books to be done, so I'm looking forward to this year. Earlier, or earlier, back in November, you submitted a letter to the board of supervisors regarding the tax collector treasurer due to the property taxes and the lack of tax auctions. Next Tuesday at 10:15 a.m., we will be discussing that letter and providing a verbal response of our I've already invited Alan Flora to be there, and I want to invite you all to be there as well. That way, we can have at least a discussion since it is an open discussion. Also, I want to come with another project that hopefully will start next year if everything works out. On Tuesday, the, on the agenda, we placed the sale of the property across from the courthouse and KEC directly to Lake Transit authorities so that we can start working on Transit Center. Very close timeline, I'm glad it's there. It should have been there a long time before, but it's better now than ever. Their grant application is due the 17th, three days later, so to have that letter of intent to sell and to start the negotiations is enough for what they need to get going on that grant, and so just to let you know, that's another opportunity there for you to be there and provide some feedback or just to see it go through. So just wanted to make sure you were aware of those things. Oh, and also, I mentioned this in the judge's breakfast this morning, want to make sure everyone else is aware, I think that your voice is important, even if it's county jurisdiction as far as what they're doing. There will be an economic development workshop, special meeting on January 22nd, that is Wednesday, January 22nd, at 9:00 a.m. at the Lower Lake Town Hall, which is the old bank, the same building that the coffee shop is on. We will be discussing a, what's our focus of economic development, what's our plan for economic development, because right now, our Vision 2028, I've been saying this since I started, is vague and it just says economic development, and that is way too broad of a topic. We need to really drill down. I love how we have a strategic plan here in Clear Lake, and I'm hopeful that we can come out with something along those lines for the county. So I just invite you because I think your voice is important. As you know, our jurisdictional lines are just lines we bleed through and we help each other out when we're successful, and so to help us make sure we're successful will help Clear Lake be more successful as well. So thank you very much for the work you're doing.
Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier. Is there anyone else from the public? Mr. Jennings?
Good evening, Chris Jennings. I don't know, sometime earlier in the summer, the discussion of C3 cannabis zoning got brought up within the zonings prior to your arrival, Mr. Perdott. If I remember correctly, I think we should pull the tape, I believe we had three out of five people that were swaying to the discussion of wanting to discuss C3 zoning more so. The way I remember that night going was Mr. Harris was for it, Vice Mayor Sloton was for it. During my last time, or during the tail end of my conversation, I believe Ms. Overton started swaying towards, she felt interested in hearing more about C3 zoning in Clear Lake for the cannabis dispensaries. At that time, Mayor Kramer kind of got the meeting kind of closed down abruptly, I believe, and I think that you guys should go back to your tapes, review the tapes. I believe there's some sort of issue there. We did have three people out of the five people at that time saying that they'd like to hear more about C3 zoning, and I think you should rightfully be back up for discussion on the agenda and looked at again and have to slip underneath the map. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any changes amended, Mr. City Manager, council? Is there anything you want to change or pull or? Okay. We approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Sloton and a second by Councilman Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Public hearing's first business item. Be the first reading ordinance number 235-2020 to amend subsection 9-1.16, is chapter nine, comma, section 9-1 of the Clear Lake Municipal Code relating to electric and electronic access gates. Mr. City Manager, if you want to tell us about that.
Actually, Chief White will provide it.
White, all right.
Between the mayor, members of the council, members of the public, I'll be briefing this item because we covered this in February of last year, and that we, or the council implemented an ordinance requiring the gates to multi-unit residential buildings in areas be equipped with certain equipment that allows public safety responders to rapidly access those properties. At that meeting, there was a public comment regarding expanding it to commercial areas, and the council asked staff to bring this item back. The item's coming back to you, namely, the change in the ordinance is adding a section, or changing the wording to clarify that in addition to multi-unit residential structures in residential areas, that commercial structures or commercial area that's impeded by electronic or electronically secured gate would be required to meet those same conditions. The proposed ordinance, much like the other one, offers a time period for compliance for existing gates. This one would allow until January 1st, 2021, for those gates to come into compliance. The cost to retrofit an existing gate is approximately $1,500. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have a question for the chief? In public, do you have any comments or questions? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to hold first reading ordinance number 235-2020, an ordinance amending subsection 9-1.16 of chapter nine of the Clear Lake Municipal Code relating to electric and electronic access gates. Read by title only, second reading for the January 23rd, 2020 meeting. Title, an ordinance amending section 9-1.16, chapter nine of the Clear Lake Municipal Code relating to electric gates, electric access gates.
Motion has been made by Councilman Harris and seconded by Councilwoman Overton. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any questions? Motion passes. Item 13. This item, I have, the way the resolution is written, I have a perceived conflict of, perceived potential conflict of interest. So I'm going to recuse myself from consideration of this item and turn it over to Vice Mayor Sloton for processing. I'll step out of the room now. Thank you. We'll open the public hearing on item number 13. Al, City Manager, please provide the staff before.
Sure, thank you, Vice Mayor Sloton, members of the council. So as you may recall, this item was first discussed by the council on October 10th of last year, and the council at that time provided direction to staff on developing a policy. So I'll give a brief background on the situation and then go into the proposed policy. So in early 2018, the county of Lake adopted amendments to the Lake County Code related to cannabis cultivation. This new ordinance created what they call cannabis exclusion areas that limit the cultivation of cannabis within a variety of areas, including within 1,000 feet of the city boundary or city sphere of influence. Currently, the city of Clear Lake sphere of influence is coterminous, or the same as the city boundary. Then in March of 2019, the county further amended several sections of the Lake County Code related to cannabis, including the cannabis exclusion areas. And this amendment allowed, one of these amendments allowed cannabis to be cultivated within the exclusion areas if the applicant can receive a letter of support from the city. So there have been several applicants that have shown interest in cultivating cannabis within the exclusion area around the city of Clear Lake, primarily thus far in the Ogulyn Canyon area. One application that I'm aware of has been received by the county, as well as a formal request to the city, the letter of support you provided to allow cannabis cultivation within the exclusion area. So back on October 10th, the council was split on whether to provide letters of support for any project. However, the majority directed that a policy framework be crafted and brought back for final consideration. So in meeting with our city attorney team, in discussing a plan forward, we believe it's important to utilize the effort that has already been put into commercial cannabis within the city boundaries and establishing those regulations that have been in place for a couple of years now through the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee, was established by the council, the Planning Commission, then of course, the city council as well. So as part of this process, there were four primary areas in the city that allow various commercial cannabis businesses. Here you see three of them because they're against the city boundaries and, but the sort of methodology that we went through was, in order to keep it simple and not put the city in a difficult legal position, it made the most sense to utilize the work that had previously been done by a variety of community members in the council and say that if cannabis activity is sort of approved in these three areas of the city, arguably it would be okay to do it in a neighboring or adjoining area outside of the city boundaries. And so sort of the short answer of the policy that you see before you is, we're recommending that any parcel that is adjoining one of these parcels in the orange, or at least 20% of its boundary is adjoining that, then it would be eligible for receiving a letter of support from the city. And so the idea is, in order to keep this simple, at least this is our recommendation, that the council adopt this policy and then if it meets these conditions, then I just have the authority to issue the letter of support to the county for the project. So, so then the second part of this is, a number of these properties, including the current application, the primary access to the property would be on the city maintenance route. And so we believe, from a staff perspective, it would be important to negotiate either with the developer or with the county, because if the project is approved, they will be receiving cannabis tax revenue from the project, that there'd be some appropriate mitigation fee to cover the impacts to city streets. We would be able to condition a project within the city related to this, but this is obviously kind of a unique situation, so we think that would be an important piece of the project. And then additionally, because there's no sort of county sheriff's office presence is somewhat irregular perhaps in our area surrounding the city of Clear Lake, if there was a security issue at any of these projects, the most likely law enforcement to respond is the Clear Lake Police Department. And so our recommendation in discussing this with the, with our police chief is that if within a one-year period, there's more than five calls for service from the Clear Lake Police Department to any particular property, that we would attempt to negotiate either with the developer or with the county for them to provide an appropriate mitigation fee for a continued response, or perhaps the county sheriff's office could create a man substation in the area where they would be able to respond. And our goal here is just that there's not an additional burden on the Clear Lake Police Department for calls for service for something that's not within our jurisdiction. So that's an overview of the property, just, or of the policy. Let's see, I can do, if I can turn this on, I just want to give you a little perspective of the number of properties that would qualify under this, this policy. There's about 20 of them. Those are the ones that are in green there. So I'd be happy to address any questions the council has.
Council, any questions? From the council?
So is there a way to mitigate a cost per call before they even start? I mean, like just have a price? If we come out, this is how much it's going to cost, so that we know upfront that there's not going to be a cost to us, because we're going to be the ones probably there. So can we just, if we do this, can we just have a mitigation of what, that they pay for the cost of that call?
We could try and negotiate anything. You know, it's ultimately going to be upon the county planning commission to decide whether to agree to conditioning the use permit with whatever we ask, but we could certainly try to do that. And of course, I mean, we have a little bit of leverage because they need to have our letter of support, but.
That's all I have right now.
Yep.
No other questions at this point from council? Any public comment on this item?
Hello, Erin McCarrick, Clear Lake. Just a couple of questions. Has there been any initial commitment or conversation with the county to provide any monetary reimbursement yet?
No.
I also have a question, if the premise is that it's based on Clear Lake allowing licenses, therefore other regions around there could have licenses, does that impact the number of licenses that Clear Lake then has?
This would have no impact on licenses available within the city boundaries.
Okay. Another question, I tried to, I didn't get back in time to come down and check anything out, but I am seeing two maps, and I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, I know that the planning commission met with the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee, and maybe this is the same map, I just, I might be missing something. So I'll give one to the city manager, and then I'll distribute one to Phil and, uh, Councilmember Harris. Hello, Vice Mayor. I should have addressed you at the beginning, Vice Mayor. I'll give one to Councilmember Harris, if you want to pass it down. But I see one from February 2018 and then one from October 2019, and I could be, could be the totally exact same map, I'm just seeing different shading.
So Vice Mayor, would you like me to, so yeah, I mean, there are different versions of the map. I, I believe this, this first one, which shows a lot more areas that would be allowing cannabis cultivation, was one of the earlier versions that was considered by the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee, and then, but that was adjusted, and their recommendations were sent to the planning commission, and then further to the city council, and this is the one that is the final.
Okay, I thought there might have been a document that I missed seeing. Okay, thank you so much. And I also want to be on record that I do support expanded business. I just want to make sure that things are consistent, that you, there's a financial commitment or potential commitment from the county first. We went to a meeting this morning, and there still hasn't been a report of how many taxes have been collected or where that money has been allocated, so, you know, make sure you get that commitment first.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sloton, if I could just quickly address the, I mean, we haven't attempted to address the county on this. I mean, normally, they, the developer applicant would be required to pay perhaps, and, you know, we've had some conceptual discussions with this applicant, they're certainly willing to talk to us, but we wanted to see first of all if the council was interested in even pursuing this policy. The reality is, though, if the project is approved by the county, they will be getting cannabis revenue, so it's not like, you know, they have to come with money to create some mitigation fee. It will, it will be flowing into them, and so, you know, we would attempt to negotiate if that's what the council wants to do, but we would, we would talk to the applicant first, most likely.
Go ahead, sir, please speak your name.
Thank you. My name is Richard Knoll. I'm a land planning consultant from Lakeport, and I'm representing the Lake Vista Farms LLC project out on Ogulyn Canyon Road. We want to thank the city council and staff, Mr. Flora and the city attorney, for your consideration of our request for a letter of support for reduced setback on this project and for your consideration of the proposed policy resolution. We think it's pretty well done, it's fairly simple. You know, this is a burden that the county has put on the city of Clear Lake, and we appreciate the fact that there's been effort put into this to help. appreciate the fact that there's been effort put into this to help come up with this policy. We read the staff report, we read the resolution, we, we understand the recommendation regarding street maintenance, mitigation fee. We also understand the issue concerning calls for police services, and, you know, we get that that, you know, could ultimately be a problem. The county's ordinance does require a comprehensive property management plan, which includes a, an extensive security plan involving, you know, fencing and cameras and security systems, lighting, et cetera, gates and, you know, that kind of thing. So, there's a lot that does go into the project, but, but we understand, and we are certainly willing to participate in that and, and address those issues should they become problematic. So, thank you.
Any other public comment at this point?
First, I think I fully support this, and I feel like oftentimes, like, cannabis has the reefer madness days, we're always quick to jump to, where we hear about law enforcement presence and everything else, and there's just a lot more to the cannabis businesses in our community other than the money that comes back into our hands, provides other economic opportunities such as work, money's being spent in town, property upgrades are happening, which in turn makes your property taxes get reassessed and they go up, including your neighbors. It'd be really cool if we could, one day, look at all the police, you know, reports that came in for cannabis businesses within Clear Lake, and the same within the county. I think you'd find that, in the long run, our businesses are just a little blip on the radar, paying a nice little pretty penny to our local municipalities. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Vice Mayor, Slooton and the City Council.
Please speak your name one more time.
I've, I've been a proponent of not allowing growing within the city since we adopted the first medicinal six-plant ordinance. I came to the City Council at that time, and I said, "We don't have to allow this," and I feared that it would bring problems, and I think it did. I think a lot of the illegal growing that started was the result of allowing something as simple as six plants for medicinal use, and I think it's gotten worse since. I'm not a proponent of growing anywhere in the city. We are allowing it, and there are restrictions required to grow it within the city. I understand the city's desire to maybe get some more income, if we can get a few more dollars for streets or whatever. I know that's one of the reasons we're allowing it now, is all these wonderful tax dollars that are going to come our way and come the state's way from all these tax dollars that are going to be paid, which isn't really happening the way it was supposed to. I'm not sure about in the city, but I know statewide, there's not near the income that they projected we should be getting, and it'll be a while before we ever see it. I have a home in the area of Augunland Canyon Road, under the right barometric pressure, let's call it. I can smell the sewer treatment facility, which is not that close to my home. I have an egg, an egg ranch across the street, and under the ripe conditions, I can smell the leftovers from chickens. I know I smell marijuana from the guy that illegally grows across the street in October and November. And, and what I, what I fear, okay, let me back up. The county did us a favor. I don't look at it as a burden on the city. They did us a favor by saying, "We will not allow growing within 1,000 feet of the city limit, unless the city says that's cool." And I think that, that granted us the opportunity to have some control over what happens. We're going to allow growing 100 feet from the city limits that's not even allowed in the city limits. You can't grow outdoors in the city limits, and we're going to allow it within 100 feet of the city limits. It doesn't make sense to me. I fear, I was reading an article in the Santa Rosa paper about Sonoma County supervisors deciding that they're going to allow growing in agricultural areas, and the neighbors, and their concerns about crime and odor. Those are real, and they're talking about him versus cannabis. And my understanding is, I don't know, but the paper said, that the neighbor said, that you can't really tell the difference between cannabis and him. So, someone that wants to rip off somebody and doesn't know it's him and thinks it's cannabis could, could cause some problems. I heard tonight about lights and fences and, you know, I get enough lights at my home on the old highway from the AT&amp;T yard, which they would focus those a little. And I think we're also going to be at the mercy of what the Planning Commission at the County of Lake decides. If we're going to allow within 100 feet of the city limits, we should know what the whole plan is, what we're going to gain from it. We, we get nothing out of this. Maybe a little money for streets. If we're going to ask for money, let's say, "Hey, look, if you're going to grow within 100 feet of our city, we want 25% of the tax income." You know, I mean, that's not, there's not going to be that much impact on the streets. I don't see heavy trucks and a lot of traffic going to these properties on Augunland Canyon messing up the street any more than it is now. If you want money, let's ask for it. We want a percentage of the tax income the guys get. But I think we should leave 1,000 feet alone. There are lots of properties in Lake County, all over the place, that you can grow marijuana on without being within 1,000 feet of the city of Clear Lake. Just because this applicant bought a piece of property, or I guess he bought it, that now grows hops, and wants to grow within 100 feet of the city limits, doesn't mean we should give in to it. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I hope you don't allow it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? If not, we hand back to the council. May we close the public hearing?
Make the motion to close the public hearing? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Counsel, any? Counselor Overton, please.
So, yes, I definitely have some concerns on this, for several reasons. Where some of these places are, are places where we expect development of high-end houses. Do you honestly think that if somebody is going to come and spend a half a million dollars on a house when they have a marijuana they grow next to it? It's not going to happen. So, the ones on both of these ends are very potential development for housing, which we need desperately, and if we do these, then we're going to cut our, cut our housing, which we can't afford to do, because these are one of the only places that can grow, put a development, a housing development in. So, we have a Provincalia development at the end of Dam Road, which was supposed to be medium to high-income houses. And then, on the other one out there by East Lake, the stepway down there, is a property that would also be very, very easily developed into housing. I just don't think we can afford to lose those spaces there. I, I think those would be very detrimental to us. Augunland Canyon Road, I'm not keen about changing that thousand. I think that was put there for a reason, but I'm not as far as that area would be as detrimental as those other two areas. So, I'm not in favor of those two, at least on the ends, at all.
Counselman.
Vice Mayor, just really quick, I just want to clarify. You can sort of see my mouse. This is the Provincalia property right here, right? This is, this is Mayor Kramer's property.
Right. Provincalia's where?
Right below it.
Right. So, it's within that area?
Oh, but it's already within the city, so it's not impacted by this policy.
No. What I'm saying is, is, are you going to buy a half a million dollar home when you have a marijuana grow next to you? You're not going to. It's, it's right there by Provincalia, that where they can grow at. Am I not correct?
It would, yeah, it would be next door to it.
Right. So, I'm saying, are you going to buy a half a million dollar home or more, which is what we were hoping there, when you have a marijuana grow right next door that you can't...
I'm not trying to argue with your position. I'm just trying to clarify that this property, the Provincalia's down here, this is the property to be allowed to grow.
Right. And I'm just saying, it's just too close for the, for the property. I understand now what you're saying. I'm saying it's too close to the property. It would smell up that area, and people aren't going to buy houses there. And on the other one is a nice piece of property that would also be a good development for housing. I just don't think we can afford to lose that space for housing. We don't have enough the way it is.
Counselman, go ahead.
So, in looking at the map, just a little, some iteration here, the areas that are highlighted in green are county properties that are adjacent to city properties. And the one thing that I would like to note here is that those county properties wouldn't be affected as far as their ability to develop a cannabis program. They would only be affected in the distance between 100 feet or an additional 900 feet to a full 1,000 feet. So, if our concern was that the property that's next to Provincalia were to develop a cannabis program, that would happen regardless. The only difference would be the distance in which it was from the city to the county line. So, that's, that's the defining difference. With the concern, as far as the smell, I think that's the chief concern that I'm hearing. With concern of the smell, in my experience with this, I don't feel like the difference of 100 feet or 1,000 feet, depending on, like we talked about, like Dave spoke about, the barometric layer or whatever takes place, I think that it could be thousands of feet, and you could still potentially smell it. So, I, I don't know. In my opinion, I don't think that makes an enormous difference. The development would be the development regardless, and it could still have a potential effect, whether it was setback 100 feet or 1,000 feet. I do have some, some obvious concerns about making sure that we're covering our bases in the sense that, clearly, these properties being so close or in the sphere of influence, the things we talked about as far as police response to those areas, and probably more importantly, with increased activity, a lot of the roadways that are accessing those particular properties are coming through the city of Clear Lake, and they're not the best of roads to begin with. And I think additional traffic on some of those roadways might be detrimental to, to those areas. I think there would be a concern to make sure that we have a, a piece of the pie as far as covering our bases for the future. So, I think during the development agreement, we would definitely want to be named in there as far as receiving a continued benefit for the use of our roadway to access those properties that, that would be developed for this purpose. Other than that, I personally don't have an issue with the difference between 100 feet up to 1,000 feet. So, I think, given the situation, if the county was to put it through their planning and make a decision based off of allowing a development in those areas, as long as it's covering the issues that would affect the sphere, sphere of influence in the city of Clear Lake, I would be accepting of this.
Counselman, Perdok.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think as we move forward, and our focus should remain on keeping Clear Lake or making Clear Lake a cleaner and safer place to live. I like the work that you've done. I'd like to thank the staff and our attorneys for putting this proposal or this order together for us, and I appreciate the work of the chief of police for looking at all the different aspects. I think what we need to take into account is, 10 years from now, you know, the city manager will be a different person, and the bases up here may be a little different. But we need to try to protect those who live in the city of Clear Lake. And I think that when people approach the county and they're, and they're filing their paperwork to begin to grow, I believe everyone comes at this with a good intent, but if we didn't ask for these things, if we didn't ask for some protections, then your responsible grower could bring some harm to the city, whether it's large trucks or, you know, heavy vehicle traffic that could, could damage the infrastructure within the city of Clear Lake, or if they're just negligent in their security systems and they're a target for that bite. I appreciate what you wrote in, to kind of provide us some, some protections in that regard. But I, and Mr. Hughes, I appreciate your position, but I know that, you know, from my experience, whether it's 1,000 feet or 100 feet, if the pressure is the right way and the winds are blowing the right way, you're going to get that smell, whether it's a solid feet or a, or 100 feet. I like the fact that we, that again, we did some work, and I feel better about this than what was initially proposed, and I'd like to thank the staff for that. But at the end of the day, it's up to the county and county planning if they're going to approve a project like this, and I'm glad we just get at least a piece of the say. So, thank you for that.
Okay. Any other special counsel comments at this point? And I asked for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 20, 20-03, approving a policy regarding the county's cannabis exclusion areas.
Second. Who seconded and fails?
You can second.
I can second. I'll second that. Your attorney?
Okay.
Second. A motion. All right. Room called, hold, in this case.
Counselmember Harris?
Aye.
Counselmember Overton?
Yep.
Counselmember Perdok? Vice Mayor Slooton?
Aye. We should pass this. Thank you all, and thanks staff for putting this, putting this... You're back for number 14.
Okay, next item. Item 14, consideration of appointing council members as representatives to the League of Cities, California Cities, Redwood Empire Division, Resolution Number 2020-04. A resolution in the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, appointing representatives to represent and vote on behalf of the city at the League of California Cities, Redwood Empire Division Business Meeting, and represent the city and vote at the Division Legislative Committee Meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much to add. With the new year, the League of Cities Representatives is the one committee that is required each year to be adopted by a resolution of the council, and so, I don't know if the mayor has any interest in recommending a change to that membership, but...
No, I've talked with, I believe I'm the alternate, and Councilmember Overton is the representative. I haven't seen any reason to change that. Go ahead.
Is that called for division and legislative, same people?
Yes. So, I'll open it up to counsel for comment.
I think the, Councilmember Overton has been the primary, and you've been the alternate.
That's correct.
So, moved it. We continue on with the same...
Yeah, open it up to public comment. Is there any comment from the public? Please get up.
My name is Annette Jingles. I'm a great fan of the League. My deceased husband was mayor and he was chairman of Public fifty for the League. And I think it's commendable that the city is involved in the League because if there's one body in the state of California that can move sack, it's the League. Would you rejoice?
Absolutely.
Fantastic group of people that really care about the community as a whole and almost, try to not say it, but I'm saying, non-political, but they really care. It doesn't matter whether you're Republican, Independent, Democrat, they care about the people and their community. So I just want to say go for it, and I'm really proud to say that I've been in Clearlake.
I appreciate this comment, and I agree that Councilwoman Overton has done a very good job over the years in the CDOs. So, any other public comment? Bring it back to counsel for action.
Look, a motion, we adopt the, the appointments.
Second minute. Of a motion by Councilman Perdok and a second by Councilman Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, item fifteen, the mayor's appointments. I have, I believe spoken to each of you with regard to your respective appointments on the, on the committees that we had this past year. I like continuity. Everyone agreed that they would continue in their current position on their, on each of these appointments, so I would like to entertain a motion then to confirm the appointments as stated.
I have one question.
Excuse me, I'll, go ahead.
This, just as a staff, this sewer district, I, when I contacted them, they haven't met for, for over ten years. Do we really need to continue on with some of these if it don't function? Or should we bring it up to the Board of Supervisors if these things don't?
I'm not, I'm not too familiar with this particular one, but I'm happy to reach out to them and see what's going on with that, and if there's a reason for us to, you know, that's what the, I don't know, if Supervisor Sabatier knows anything about this particular district, but.
Yeah, I think we need to find out a little bit more about it and see why we aren't having any meetings. We've got that same situation with the Airport Commission that, that have been trying to push them on, and I see that Supervisor Sabatier, when we opened it up to public comment, apparently has one paper. So, why don't you, did you want to say before we go?
I have another comment.
Before we go then?
Sure. The, the, LAFCO, this year, Clearlake gets to appoint two people.
Yeah, Clearlake has the alternate, I think, this year.
Yes.
So, and we do have an.
I would be the alternate for somebody as an asset this year.
Exactly, and that, that was what we discussed earlier too.
Just wanted to point it.
Yeah. Go ahead.
That actually makes me think that Lakeport mistimed their application for the annexation now that they don't have to focus on.
Absolutely, they did, right.
I wanted to say that Councilmember Overton has already talked to me about the sewer district. I have been having conversations with Jan Koffler, who is the Director of the Sewer Districts, Special Districts, that she feels that there's no need for meeting, but I'm trying to organize a meeting for her to at least express what changes have happened in the sewer district, what they're working on in the sewer district. I think being informed since our sewer is only by Special Districts, that it would be good for everybody to understand exactly where we stand, what project she's working on, and so on and so forth. And if there's a need after that meeting that comes together, then there'd be some feedback about the need to continue having those meetings. But at this point in time, I am trying to work with Jan Koffler to make that meeting happen.
I'd, I'd like to know in order, or input might be, I'm not too happy with several of their recent decisions. So yeah, I think we need to push for a meeting until we have a better understanding of how they operate.
And I have not heard about the Airport Committee. I know that it was said it was supposed to happen before the end of the year, but I was told by Scott Daley on sometime in January, so hopefully that will be the case.
I don't keep a question on that. Councilmember Overton, you have a question for Supervisor Sabatier?
So, does the Special Districts not follow under the supervisors?
Oh, they sure do.
Okay, so, I'm asking you as a supervisor to go back to your board, put it on the agenda and demand that there be a meeting. It's not a request anymore, it's a demand. That is your job. It is their job to follow your direction. Go back and, and, and tell your, your board that you'd like to, that we want a meeting. We have the right to have this meeting if we have, have this. I've been here for fifteen years. I have been trying to get the Special Districts to meet for fifteen years, and our past supervisor did not help with that. I am asking you to not be nice about it anymore, it's been fifteen years. Say we want a meeting. At that meeting, we could determine if it's something we want to carry on, and if it's not, we can take it off our list and that's fine. But I still think that we have the right to have the meeting and to make that a decision of the people who belong in that Special Districts. It's not just us in the city, there's a lot of people that belong in this Special Districts.
They, they do lighting, they do all kinds of stuff.
So we're not the only one, and Spring Valley has been trying to get a meeting as long as I've sat on this board. So, I, I've always wondered is, why is it that we're sitting here asking as a council, the other Special Districts people have asked for, and the supervisors have never said, you're unemployed, we're telling you to have a meeting, that's really what it takes? So I'm asking you to make that step that the past supervisor did not. Thank you.
We'll be done. And just to let you know, there will be a lull because there was a skiing accident, so therefore the Director is out just for a little bit. But that does not mean that it will not be put on the agenda, and we will make sure that that happens.
When that happens, let me know, I'll be there.
Councilmember Perdok, hold on a minute. Supervisor, Councilmember Perdok, you have a question?
Not really a question, but I, I'd just like to echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Overton. As entity that receives tax dollars from, through our property tax system, those Special Districts, I believe, have transparency to report out to us their certain conditions. And we talk about economic development, we talk about growth, we talk about subdivisions, and all of those desires of ours to help build and clean and make Clearlake a better place to live, and also this area and our surrounding county neighborhoods are all impacted by our Special Districts. And I, again, I concur that by not having any public meetings, that does not afford the public transparency.
Agreed. And I will be back to let you know when that meeting will take place.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris, do you have anything to add to that?
I wouldn't like to bark at you, I thought this was. I've heard it, I've heard it. And I will say just as a side note comment, that we did add as a Board of Supervisor, a committee specifically for Hope Rising to make sure that the county is not just involved as an individual, but that there's an alternate from the Board of Supervisors that can go when Supervisor Scott cannot be there. And maybe that's something that this council wants to think about to make sure that the city, not just an individual, is involved with Hope Rising, just putting it out there. Thank you.
I would add the Airport Commission to that, little Special Districts.
I'm speaking about all Special Districts, not just the sewer district.
And the Special Districts covers water, covers lighting, covers many different aspects of.
Inspire.
All kinds of pieces of that Special Districts. That's what I've been trying about fifteen years, that it should have been happening so that we all know what's going on with all of them.
We're sure glad you stayed here to hear that.
And I will push again for the airport to find out a date for you as well.
Appreciate that.
I think that, at least I've met once, I think, in fifteen years.
Not that I don't.
No, I went to one meeting.
Okay, are there any other public, public comments on this? I think we're, being done, we'll bring it back. Are we ready to take action on my appointment recommendations?
I move that we confirm the mayor's appointments to the various committees.
Okay, a motion's been made by Vice Mayor Sluton, seconded by Councilwoman Overton. All in favor?
Aye.
Questions passed. That concludes our items. We will move on to City Manager and Councilmember Reports. Mr. City Manager?
Very brief. As you hopefully have noticed, Austin Park construction is progressing nicely in spite of some of the weather we've been having. We have been doing a lot of work over the last several months on our finance system update. We're nearly done with our chart of accounts overall, which is taking a lot of time. Supervisor Sabatier mentioned meeting next week related to the tax collector, so just to make sure the public knows what response we have received so far. We received a letter from the Grand Jury saying that they stand by a previous report that they issued a couple of years ago. We also recently received a letter from the Board of Equalization saying that they received our letter, and they don't have direct oversight over the tax collector's portion of responsibilities, and they forwarded their letter and our letter to the State Controller's Office Deputy Director there. And the city of Lakeport provided a letter of support for our request and has sent that to Board of Supervisors. The Lake County Chamber of Commerce also decided to make this their number one champion project for 2020. I'm not sure if they've sent letters to the Board of Supervisors yet, if they intend to. And of course, I will be at next week's meeting at 10:15. And I think with that, that's my report, unless you make questions.
Thank you. Councilman Perdok?
Thank you. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday. I never, I haven't attended an official meeting since we last met, but I do want to report out on a meeting that we had regarding Hope Rising and Hope Center that exists here in the city of Clearlake. I shared this information with the group at the Morning Breakfast Group. We are moving forward, I know the community has not seen much of any change in that building for the past year, but I assure you that the work has not stopped. To use the example of the park, which is in, you know, full reconstruction mode at this point, I'd like to remind everyone that those conversations took place when Mayor Denise Luslow was seated at this dais, and we began that process there. Simply said, it takes a while. It takes a while to go through all the hoops and all the hurdles, find the funding and the budgets and the plans that will, that will put a project forward. I'm excited to say that we are at that point now, and we have an approved plan with a couple of changes, I think, way near back from our planner. But ultimately, we have approved plan, and we're going forward looking for the funding that will build that building. That said, for my, I have a request for our next meeting, and that, that request is that this council would consider supporting and joining in partnership with Hope Rising and helping to complete that project by funding it with CDG B and A series monies. And I would ask that you consider the amount of $500,000 to help build that project out. It is a significant project, and I think we'll have a great deal to do with the safety and to help house people that are currently unhoused in our city limits and even outside of our city limits. We're seeing tremendous success with some of our other projects like Restoration House, and we have good success with people getting into permanent supportive housing, and that is exactly the program we would like to implement at Hope Center. So I hope that council would accept that action.
Councilmember Harris?
I have nothing of significance to report.
Councilmember Overton?
I'd just have a few things. First, most of the meetings didn't happen, everybody was on a blackout, so we didn't have any really committees, but I just wanted to let everybody know, I did that Christmas Community Dinner at the Community Center, and we served over 150 people, we were overwhelmed, we were packed, had families that would come in, and, and we were lucky enough to have a nice donation, that we were able to give toys out, and we were able to give blankets to people. That was funded by just donations. So our, our community was very generous in helping us make that really successful and nice, and all the food was donated. It just, it just always comes together, so I'm always excited when, when I do that, and it was just really nice. Everybody had a good time, music going on, and everybody had a really great time, so I appreciate that. So that's really all I had to report, this re-dinner, raised funds for our senior meals, was it really good, it turned out, so we'll be doing that annually from now on. And then they worked on our community kitchen, cleaning it, taking out some baseboards. I understand we're getting new baseboards next week, so I will be excited. So I see our community center really coming together, kind of like our park, it's something that, these are the two projects of mine, since I've been on council, was our community center and our parks. So I'm excited, after fifteen years, to actually see that come forward, so, so, you know, really look forward to, I think this year is going to be a great 2020, we're going to really finish up, and, and people are going to start really seeing the difference of the things that we do. I said a couple of years ago, five years, you'll see a big difference in Clearlake, but I, I'm really hoping that, they're going to start seeing a big difference this year. So, I want to thank our, our staff, we're really working hard to make all these things come true, and our community is going to benefit tremendously from the things that we're doing this year, so I'm kind of excited for 2020, it's going to be a great year. You're going to do good, Alan, right?
Thank you, Councilwoman Overton. Vice Mayor Sluton?
I really don't have any, didn't go to any public events, so I really don't have anything to report on this one.
Councilmember Perdok reminded me that we, that Rotary had a Christmas dinner in October, that.
December.
Yeah, I know that. December, it's been a long night. Anyway, we have not reported on it, and just to give a little report on that, we served over a thousand people this year. Is it thirteen hundred? I got the final figure. Thirteen hundred for, for a Christmas dinner, full, full-fledged dinner. We also had a warm for the winter giveaway, gave away a lot of, lot of clothes. Councilmember Overton, I think contributed greatly to that.
Like all the clothes.
Like all the clothes.
Cut down those.
We also had a clinic, both medical and dental. Exams were given, flu shots were given out, Santa Claus gave out toys to six or seven hundred kids, along with having their photographs taken. It was a great community event, I think it went over well, and the four of us that sit here are all in Rotary, four of us that are in Rotary and.
Nobody's invited.
And the fifth one, and the fifth one contributed greatly, even though she's not, not in Rotary. So anyway, that was, I think was a great, successful event, which we all enjoy doing. Moving on, on, speaking of the Austin's Park, City Manager Flora has asked me to head a sponsorship drive for benches, tables, and shade structures in the park, where we'll offer businesses and individuals in the city an opportunity to put their name on one of those items for, for a sponsorship of so much. I have the forms ready, we have to, well, not quite ready, we need to do a little bit of changing to them, but we will be going around here in the next few months, we'll be advertising it, so if you or if you have any businesses that are interested in, in sponsoring one of those items, you can get ahold of me directly or City Manager Flora for more information on that. So that's about all I have. Again, I didn't, we didn't attend very many meetings this last month, a lot of fundraising we had.
Before you close, I just want to say one more thing.
And Councilwoman Overton's going to do a work.
Yeah, I was really kind of going to add to the Rotarians, you guys serve more meals because after their things, they, they, they had a lot of ham wrapped over, so by the way, your ham is what fed the community. I didn't, I didn't have to go. But along with that, it's, it's served many, many meals on wheels, you know, so I'm going to say add another four or five hundred on to what you guys had already did, because it wasn't just. The good thing about when they do these things, they have been very generous to make sure that they donate them to the seniors, so, but this year, because of what you guys donated to us, we were able to serve the community more, and still a lot of meals on wheels. So, I want to thank the Rotarians for that, that really helped us out a lot, and our, people on Christmas time appreciated it very, very much.
True. That's one of the things. That's one of the things we all, I think, enjoy doing. Okay, any other reports?
A quick, quick deal. Well, you didn't have one, so you know. I haven't, except for today, I had the opportunity to meet you, new Public Works Director, I'm sorry, your name again?
Dale.
Dale. I'm really grateful to have you on board, on our team, and desperately needed for our community, and really look forward to seeing the work that you do in our city. Really grateful to have you, appreciate you coming here, joining our team.
I think that probably goes for all of us.
Welcome aboard.
Yes.
Okay, that does it for the reports. Future agenda items, I think Councilman Burdock mentioned one that we wanted to see. Are there any others? Anybody you'd like to bring up? Okay, seeing that...
The only thing I would just add is the annual Police Department report was scheduled for the first meeting in February. Councilmember Sluton is not going to be able to make that meeting, so we're going to push it back to the last meeting in February, so all the council can be a part of that.
Okay. At this time, we're going to adjourn to closed session at 7:55.